Ready?
Yes.
All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no bodies for public input, so we're not gonna read that. We don't have public input, so we're skipping down to number three minutes.
What did you find Stephanie?
I did not.
All right.
I actually had a question.
Sure.
Was Suknells a resignation or a retirement, or does it matter?
It was a retirement.
It's a retirement. Did I put resignation?
I believe it says.
Okay, so we can address adjust that. Thank you.
Yeah, it did say resignation.
Okay. We'll fix that.
Anybody see anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion for amended minutes.
Make a motion we accept the amended minutes.
Second. Is it Alma?
Yeah, she raised her hand.
That was Alma. Quiet, no more. Yeah, you guys speak. Sorry. Okay, all those in favor, accept any amended minutes.
By both.
Okay, facilities and finance update.
Sure.
So this evening, we just wanted to have part two of the discussion about the overcrowding or the space issues that we have in North Berwick. So tonight, we wanted to talk a little bit more in depth about MHA, Mary Heard Academy, and some of the history that led us up to where we are now with MHA. And then we wanted to talk a little bit more about Milton School. Currently, what we have for the makeup of the grade span there, the room space there. So we'll go through that. And we also, Sue, is that Travis?
Yeah.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
Yep, so Sue also put something out about inviting board members to go visit
Right.
the two spaces.
Right.
So the hope would be that we do a little more discussion tonight. And then next week would be the opportunity to visit if anybody has time in their schedule to do so. And then we move into the final discussion, or a final or more discussion at the following meeting.
So by the end of December?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
I think that would make a good timeline. Just because it is a decision with many factors.
Yeah.
So just for reminders, last time when we talked, we talked about the three proposals. One was to install modulators in North Berwick. The other was to move the fifth grade over to Milton School. The other option was to look at Mary Heard Academy. Because of the price of the modulators and to sprinkle them and to get them all up to code, that was cost prohibitive for us at that time, so we took that one off the table. So we are looking at two situations right, two options right now, which is MHA and Milton. So Sue, do you want to start talking just about MHA a little bit?
Sure. So I shared a document with you folks about sort of the historical piece about Mary Heard Academy. Some of you were not on the board when they started this program, some of you are. So I just want to kind of go over it quickly. I'm not going to read it to you, that's why I sent it to you, so you can read it later. But basically, Mary Heard was started in September of 2013, based mostly on the fact, hello Rebecca, mostly on the fact that we had hit that $1 million marker of students going out of district. And we really determined that we could probably create our own in district program and if not, provide the same for less money. At least it would be in district and kids would be in their own community. So we broke it down, as you see, as you'll see. I just kind of talked about what the development phase looked like. We did a lot of research actually around the district, looking for, and outside of the district, looking for physical spaces that would benefit a program like this. And ultimately, we actually came back to the Mary Heard, or to the Heard School at that point, and talked about building, creating two cottages for North Berwick Elementary School that would be more modern and up to date for students. Because the Heard School in general was, it's like our second oldest building underneath Lebanon Elementary School. Might even be a little older actually than Lebanon Elementary. And it needed quite a bit of sort of just support and work for 100 students to be there, which is what the North Berwick fourth and fifth grade was looking like. For the, for this particular program, was about, we figured we would start with about 20 students. There was a lot more flexibility in that building. And so that's really what the focus became. And the other thing, just aside from the financial savings in terms of having our students in district and with our own programming, we really talked about like the fact of these kiddos are some of the most challenging in the district, behaviorally or emotionally needy. And we really felt like we could do a better job serving them in our community. These are typically young folks who do not leave the area. They stay in our community, so developing those relationships in terms of within the North Berwick, Berwick and Lebanon system just made a lot more sense. So we really focused on community building. We talked about like socio-emotional, academics obviously. And then the fact, the good part about the academic piece is that we could tie right into the high school and meet the standards, maybe in a different way, but meet the same standards as the, as our normal high school students. When we were sending our students out of district was a much harder sort of match to help those students get noble diplomas when they were out at day treatment programs like Sweets or Strong Lake or even Maplestone, those kind of things. And the other part was that reintegration of students from out of district placements into the, into noble was really difficult. It on base, just like, some of it's just logistically. Having students be able to come back in for a class or two and work their way back in, can't really do that if you're busing students to like Saco or Portland or wherever it is that the programming was. It just wasn't, it didn't make for a good, easy integration. So that was another sort of thought process for us. And so we decided that this was something we're going to go forward with. And economically, it was obviously better for us in the long run. And we also were able to ultimately develop a program that we are now able to tuition other students from other districts yet on a regular basis to help offset the cost. So at the bottom of that document, then I hope you read the whole thing because I did do a kind of an overview of everything that we're doing there regarding like the external learning opportunities and the programming that we do provide on a daily basis. But if you look to the bottom of that, it really does come down to the brass tacks of the finances, which is, MHA currently has an enrollment of 27 students. Will be at 29 to 30 at the end of September because we have two students from the district coming, you know, they're tutoring right now, and an out of district student on the, on the docket. So total cost for running the program, all staff, which includes salaries and benefits, purchase services, which is not much, but it's just a little extra things that we work on with the students, and supplies is $726,641. So, and we currently have five students tuitioned in. And it, and those are per student is $29,950. So with a total cost for those five students or revenue to the district of $149,750. So that brings the total cost of the program itself for those students to $576,891. If you, if we were to have placed those 22 noble students out in the, in the sort of comparable out of district placements, we kind of just divvied them up between two programs. Maplestone, which is kind of an experiential learning program in Acton, and Sweets, which is a typical programming thing. There, it would, it would have, with tuition, extra services because most of, Sweets in particular charges a baseline and then services on top of that. And transportation for us to get our kids to and from. We worked it out to be like $1.2 million, so $1,289,420. And then I broke it down for you so you can see that. But, so the savings, if you think about that, the savings to the district is about $712,000. So it's pretty significant. Now, having said that, we are certainly open to whatever the board, you know, wants to do. And I think that we'd like to definitely give whoever is interested a tour, sort of that back-to-back between what Milton looks like, what Mary Heard looks like, and then any of the other buildings, maybe Huzzy, whatever, whatever folks are interested in looking at. So I've said, I know that three, you three have responded. And I'm happy to, I'll fit it in based on, I'm gonna just look at the information, but I'll get back to you about the date. And I can do more than one, so it's not, it's not a problem that way. And I have no problem giving individual tours, so it's not a problem. So I, just so that you have a good sort of full visual when you, when we have that conversation next week to follow.
Can you um, to break it down as to how many rooms there you're seeing on the building?
Yep.
I know this is a food pantry.
Yep, that's, yeah.
Food pantry.
Yes.
I've got some of that.
Yeah. Well, and I can tell you right now, so the building itself has, what did we say, nine usable rooms, right? Because that's what we're thinking about.
In total?
In total.
Okay, upstairs.
And that, upstairs, and not in.
That's just upstairs.
Taking, yeah, no, that's up and down.
Okay.
So there's.
Well, I'm gonna all pass myself.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean. No, thank you.
Yep.
Nope.
So basically.
Fine.
Questions here really quick though. This is actually the backpack program, right, downstairs?
Okay.
Yeah, because this in case we can capture, we can take this here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, okay. So there are nine classrooms available at Mary Heard Academy. If we take everything out, like we remove the food pantry folks, and based, so it leaves three possible rooms if we keep Mary Heard in the building. Like if we keep the Mary Heard students in the building and then just, there are three rooms that are available.
Does that include the food pantry in the?
Included in those nine.
So this is actually the backpack program that says food pantry here. It's really the backpack program and the second trans closet, which are downstairs, like in the cellar.
Oh, okay.
So those are extras.
They could remain, no matter what was done.
They could what?
They could remain there.
They can remain, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if we decide to do that, yeah. So there's three, with some work, there are three rooms that we could, we could sort of take, take on for elementary. Yeah. And that's, that's, that's pretty much that. But I think it'll be helpful for y'all to see it in person and see those, see what's happening there.
And Spencer's on, hi Spencer, in case you have any initial questions for Spencer.
Spencer's our principal.
Principal MHA.
Yeah.
There probably will be questions after the visit.
Yeah.
So.
Exactly.
So our other question.
Yeah.
Well, I thought when we were considering like using some of the space there, we were not considering moving the current programs out, right?
Not necessarily, no. I think, I just, we just wanted to be clear about what was available.
Okay, okay, I just didn't.
Across the board.
Okay, I didn't think, I, I just was confused a little bit by the description of whether.
Awesome.
Okay.
Sorry, we're turning you up. There you go. Yo, you're, you're, you're correct. This would, if, there are three rooms that are available if we coexisted. If that makes sense. If MHA stayed and then we added, we took this, the lower wing. But it will be tight, so we'll just have to figure that out.
And to your question Denise, last meeting, not your question, but just kind of asking us to project out further than just the fifth grade for space issues. If we needed to move the fourth grade, there are three classes at MHA that we could use.
Yeah.
So that doesn't necessarily solve that.
The four or five problem.
The four or five problem. We did speak with Mike from North Berwick and Sarah, who's the assistant in North Berwick. And they did talk about one of the things that they were thinking about longer term for fourth grade and third and second is to look at class size and make them a little bigger so that the fourth grade could stay longer in the building with, with the cottages.
Right.
Than having to go, to move quickly.
Right.
So that's like the second year plan.
Second, yeah. And then, and then.
Well, it's the kindergarten right now, that's the bubble.
Yeah.
So it would be second grade, by the time they get to second grade.
Right. Yeah. And so Denise, you actually, your question last week, or two weeks ago, really sort of propelled us to be thinking beyond the year that's in front of us. And it did open up so, well, it opened up that whole box that we always left open, right? The next, like what, how's this all gonna play out? Yeah.
Great.
I also shared the, the document that I handed out. It starts with North Berwick Elementary School. So currently there are 300 students, so we'll just review some of this. So I hope you have that Denise. Currently 300 students in North Berwick. And the layout is four sections of kindergarten. That's the largest grade level currently.
Don't they make their numbers though lower in kindergarten than the other grades?
Yes. But still, this is still a pretty high.
These are basic, yeah.
There is, that's 64 students. Then three sections of sec, first, second, third, fourth, and then fifth has two sections. They will need three sections next year of fifth grade. And that is, so when we were looking at this, this is why we had looked at three classrooms. So they have 20 rooms that you would consider, one would consider available to be classroom-sized rooms, classroom-sized rooms. 18 of those rooms are currently being utilized for classroom spaces. One is a split room, full-size room, split between special education resource and the behavioral interventionist. And then one room, which is a smaller space, houses Excel slash intervention. So that's, that's it. I mean, that's, there's no wiggle room there. One of the, one of the current classrooms, I think it's Borgetta's one, is, is almost half the size of a nor, of like a traditional or typical classroom size. So her class, you know, she doesn't have a full load of, of students in that classroom. It's not a full roster. It's like 12 students.
So your specials don't have their, any?
They do have space.
Specials do.
Do, yes.
Yeah.
Technology is on a cart, but art and music have a space. And the PE has the job, yeah. So then if you go down to Milton School, there's currently 201 students in fourth and fifth grade. They have six sections of fourth, five sections of fifth, three special education programs, one of which is just straight resource. So they have 23 available classrooms. So similar Nancy, they have an art room and a music room. And the library is the library slash technology. It's an integrated portion there. So 11 of those 23 rooms are currently grade-level classrooms. Four house the special ed programs. One is for Excel. One room is for, just, it's a science lab. So it's, it's a nice-sized classroom. It houses some of the science materials that the grade levels use and they can go sign in and go into that classroom to teach science. One classroom-sized room is for occupational therapy, physical therapy. One room is for speech therapy and the math coach, when she's in the building, is there. That math coach is not fully there. It's one position throughout all kindergarten through fifth grade rooms and all those buildings. So it's, it's not a daily person in that space. One room is the behavioral interventionist. And then two rooms house Title I educational technicians, the interventionist and the literacy coach. And one room is a meeting space. In addition to the conference room and the office, across the hall is a classroom that's being used for meetings. So with careful reassignment, you could get an additional three to seven classrooms in that building. The work that would need to be done to one of those rooms is the science room. And they have the tables, like the more traditional tables that are already in the, you know, attached to the ground. So we need to pull those up and we tile.
Roger, sorry, I know this is in here, but so five to seven classrooms. What, what was the number that we needed?
We need three.
Okay.
For this year, I mean for next year.
Right, for next year.
And then what, for the year round?
Sure, so the, Mike's feeling is that he would like to increase class sizes, third, fourth, second, third, fourth, so that keeps the other, the K4 students in North Berwick as long as they can go, which is longer than two years. You know, it's like three, four, five years out.
Yeah.
However, we have space at Milton to bring the fourth grade over because we have up to seven classrooms. So what I want to talk about is Huzzy, I didn't put Huzzy on here. The Huzzy space is right now, okay, they're doing, they're doing well. They're utilizing spaces, but they can consolidate how Milton would consolidate. So they are not in the, North Berwick is the need. Huzzy and, and Huzzy, Denise, you may remember this, but Huzzy had two modulators there at one point. So it's all set for modulators. If we needed to have more space and if North Berwick was at Milton and Huzzy needed more space, we could add another modular at Huzzy for a fraction of the cost
Yeah.
as North Berwick, because things are already hooked up at Huzzy.
So at Milton right now, they have fourth and fifth grade?
Right. Yes, for Berwick.
The Berwick.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
So the school is set up for fourth and fifth.
Right, right.
Whereas MHA, the, it's primarily high school students that are there.
So Mike would rather have larger classes to keep the fourth grade there?
That's what he, that's his thought process right this minute, yeah.
Okay.
For second, third and fourth.
Right.
His.
Because I mean, being fourth graded at Milton already, I would think that, you know, I mean, they would be with other fourth graders.
Right.
Yeah, and that's also, that is a, that is also a consideration. So, and I think that Michelle, when we talked to Michelle, she actually was like, if we're going to go in that direction at some point, she felt like it would be best to do it at once rather than not. Like, let's just do it. And then we would also, you would have to seriously look at the combination. So it would be a, a mix of Berwick and North Berwick. It wouldn't be like only North Berwick is here and only Berwick is here.
Oh, true, for classes, yeah. Well, what, when you put, if you put the fifth grade over there, is that what you're gonna do too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So last year, when we had the mix, it was one floor, you know, one section was Lebanon, at, at the middle school, one section was Lebanon section, fifth grade, one was North Berwick and one was Berwick.
Right.
They would integrate, they would fully integrate.
I guess, that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's the, what's the increase for the class size? I mean, bigger classes, like, do we have an example of, of what that looks like?
Um, I think he was really looking in the twenties, in the, yeah, in the early twenties.
Yeah.
Early twenties?
Okay. The early twenties, those earlys, um, yes.
But you're still gonna have that bubble coming through, so when,
That's, well, it's 64.
That bubble gets there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if, and that's the other thing, if the kindergarten continues, kindergarten's always like a roll of the dice a little bit because you get projections, but then when they actually show up, that's when you know.
Yeah.
And so if he gets a 64 or 70 the ne, next year and then again, just, I'll, I'll just give you a five-year statistic, just so you have that. I did not print it all out, but. Find it. So this is just total enrollment for each building. So for Huzzy School, from 2016 to now, they've gone down 30 students. Milton School, between the same timeframe, 2016 to now, they've gone down 32 students. Hanson School has gone down 38 students. Lebanon Elementary has gone down 22 students. And North Berwick has gone up 12. And you know, years dip and everything, but that's the overall change.
Okay. Well, this is good information for me.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I like this.
All right. So we'll be able to go through it a little more, um, the next, the next meeting, yeah?
Yeah, so just a question. Do, do we want to schedule a time when you can take us on a tour tonight, or?
Uh, yeah, so I think what I have, what I sent the email out to folks, Lynn and Stephanie responded.
I didn't respond because I figured I'd stay tonight.
No, it's fine, and that's normal. But I, I figured I would see you here, so, um, I figured I'd harass you all. So, um, so Lynn had said Wednesday would be best, and you were Thursday, right?
Thursday was best, but I can make Wednesday work.
Well, I can, it's ser, I hope not, like, those plots are in my world and so I have no problem giving you a tour on Thursday. And what works for you?
Um, Thursday would be better for me too.
Okay. So, all right.
We're talking next week, right?
Yes. And Alma, what time did you?
I think I said Wednesday, I'm just checking.
Okay, so I can do, we can do Lynn and Alma on Wednesday. So what that would mean is, is I would meet you guys probably here at, Wednesday was 10 o'clock and Thursday both, so 10 o'clock if that works in your world. Here, does that work for you Steph?
Yes.
With your schedule, okay.
So that'd be the night, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
So can you guys just sort of, if you send out an email or something like that, just keep me on it. I don't think I can make it, but I would love to, I just don't.
Yeah, that's okay, the timing is not great, but I can do something differently Denise, if you wanted to do something around your schedule that worked better. And Rebecca, the same for you, I know you guys have less flexible schedules. So I can do after work hours. It's just what I was hoping was that you could see us, kids in action, um, just because.
What time do they start?
What time, I'm sorry?
What time do they start in the morning there?
7:30, well, MHA is 7:30 and the element, uh, Milton is 8:30, basically.
So I am pretty familiar with Milton, so I don't, I'm, I would be more interested in the Mary Heard Academy and I could maybe, maybe we could find a time to go, you know, just at eight in the morning or.
Sure, yeah, we could definitely do that. Let me look at my schedule and I'll shoot, I'll note out to you, okay?
Okay.
And that's, that's good. Um, I know that Kate was interested, but I think she is gonna be limping for a while, so I'll leave for me.
Yeah.
And Travis has pretty, has been very, like, he's been in all the buildings for a while, so I think that's less of a concern. And Rebecca, I don't know if you're interested or able, less, less interest, mostly able. But I can do something special for you if you'd like. Oops, you're talking and I'm not hearing you Rebecca.
Yeah, but I was muted. Yeah, I'm not sure about next week. I'm kind of doing some stuff at work that's kind of.
That's okay, and, and the other thing, we are not, like, it'll be two weeks from tonight that we actually make the final conversation happen. So if something looks better the following week, Rebecca, I can do that. But again, no big pressure. We can also do, um, as we're touring ladies, we can take a little video and send it out to Rebecca. I'm okay with that.
So I guess I'm not in it, I'm okay with it.
All right, we'll play that one back. Yeah, so we can.
Take some video and, you know.
Yeah, we can take a video and send it out, that's fine. Yeah. My skills at that are not great, but I, I'm sure it'll at least be entertaining.
Probably the kids can do it.
Yeah, probably, definitely. All right, so I'll, I'll try to figure, we'll try to do that next week Rebecca, and then if it's a total fail, I'll reach out to you. But if it's not and it gets you what you need for information, then that'll work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about this portion? Okay. Thank you. Thank you Spencer. Go take care of those babies.
You're welcome, absolutely.
So is that all we have for finance and facilities?
For that.
Yes.
We do have, that just arrived. Do you guys want to fit in? Do you want to fit in public input? Oh, well, we'll get out. Or do you want to wait till the end? Sir, did you have public input tonight? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We want to give you a joy, chance.
So we want.
People don't just usually come to hang out with us. So thank you for that.
So we go into.
So we go into five?
Yes, okay. So for educational programming, we often just start talking about attendance. So student attendance has ranged, these are the past two weeks, so sixty-six was our low and a hundred percent was our high. And for staff attendance, ninety, uh, eighty-eight was our low and ninety-seven was our high. Percent.
I don't know if we're gonna speak to this later or not, but the, the outbreak in Lebanon, maybe go over that.
Sure. Yeah, sure, we can.
That would be a percent.
Sixty-six percent attended.
Yes, that's, yes.
Yeah.
So, so right prior to vacation, we had over a hundred students out in Lebanon. Due to either being close contacts, testing positive, and then, you know, we usually have higher numbers at that time, right, leading into a, a longer weekend or something as well. But that was a significant uh, impact that we noticed in, in Lebanon. Um, so what we can say is that last week, we had a total in the district of thirty cases. We currently have a total of twenty cases right now. The difference right now is that because we, um, have more remote Monday and Tuesday, um, close contacts aren't impacted at this point for, for those cases.
And are those just student cases, the other staff?
Those are student and staff.
Answered, okay.
We do have some staff, yes. Um, so seven, so this is, this is the number that is really striking, I think, that we wanna just make you all aware of. So seventy-two percent of the last thirty-six cases have been residents of Lebanon.
Say it again, seventy?
Seventy-two percent of the last thirty-six positive cases have been residents of Lebanon. And that was, um, one piece of the information that we were using, those high numbers, when we talked with the principal, the assistant principal and Amy Crichton, to see if we could kind of kick it. Uh, you know, kind of, we, so many children were impacted being close contacts, that we were hoping that this time for remote would really help us get to the next break. So, and as I said, we, um, we have not had a lot of close contacts at this point because they've been out now since last Tuesday.
Did you have a lot of new reported cases right after Thanksgiving or not?
We, they're starting to trickle in, but the problem is, um, one of the issues we're seeing is that parents are take, doing the home test and counting and calling us with the home test, but we have to take a test from the doctors, you know, like a, got a home test.
Oh, so they got a home test closet in there.
So we have all these pending cases that we are awaiting a different test result for. Um, we are a little, um, you know, we're going to look at our numbers next week, you know, it can go either way. We're not quite sure what that's gonna look like, um, but that's, you know, like one more thing, you know, everybody's kind of up right now. Uh, different districts are doing different things because they're seeing a spike in their numbers as well, so.
Yeah.
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 Um, but just Lebanon was just, you know, you had the bu- you know, some close contacts from the bus, you know, the cafeteria, from
Yeah.
playdates, from all of that, and it was just kind of a, a cycle that we weren't able to.
So that make, did that make Monday and Tuesday easier though, as far as, because everybody was remote and that kind of tracing of everything was easier?
Right, yes. Yes, and it was, yes, and we were able to get parents, um, you know, on the phone, so we were able to do that all in one piece.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Oh, just bring it down, I'll take care of it. Thank you. You're gonna get to be on TV. Lena can. Thank you. Thanks, see you later.
We did get, um, feedback from, uh, Patty Gilli and her old friends got feedback from Lebanon. Um, from, like a, a good healthy handful of parents who were just very, um, supportive of the fact that the, the efforts to, to move this through the school so that we don't have to keep identifying a wide of those contacts and, and, and.
So the hope is Monday, we're good to go.
Yes, yes, yeah, yes.
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Yep. So those were our big pieces for, um, educational programming.
Okay.
Those conversations.
Uh, ready to go on then?
Well, I'm, yes.
Six.
Going to employment.
We have one resignation, Tyler Iverson. He's at Noble High School for math and he is resigning, um, effective, I think it's January twenty-first, to pursue a different career path. So we do need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, we accept Tyler's resignation.
I'll second that.
Seconding, okay. All those with paper? Just looking for.
Six now, right?
Right.
And we have two retirements. We have Nancy Day, who has been in Lebanon for twelve years. Um, as a literacy, she, right now she's doing some literacy coaching, but also working as a literacy interventionist. She was teaching reading recovery when she first began with us. And then another Lebanon teacher, Nancy Nathan, who has, um, been the art teacher in Lebanon for thirty-four years.
Yeah. Yes, she has. Thirty-four years.
Uh-huh. Both of those retirements are effective at the end of the school year, so they're not now.
Alright.
Uh-huh, they did submit their letters. So, and we do need a motion to, um, accept those, and we can accept them both together.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the two resignations.
Is that Alma?
Yes.
Okay, somebody to second it?
I'll second it.
Who is Lynn? All those are favored, they've accepted the retirements?
Okay.
Good for them.
Yeah, and we thank them for their dedication to Lebanon and their services and their service, very much so.
Yes, yeah. And their service. Yes.
We do have a, um, we wanna bring in a new, um, a new candidate for you. It's not on the agenda because we just interviewed, Michelle Caniston interviewed yesterday and I interviewed today. For, um, the Sue Pennell retirement, so even though it's not on the agenda, we would like to do a hire.
Now, tell me what Sue Pennell did.
She was fifth graded, she's fifth grade at Nolton.
Oh, okay.
And last meeting, we approved her retirement effective December, right before break.
Okay.
So this position would fill that retirement. So I'm.
A big win. We were really worried about being able to fill it with a good candidate, so, yay.
Right. So are you okay if I present this?
Sure.
Okay. So this candidate is Rebecca Alfredson. And she is coming to us, um, from, I forget the name of the school, Salem Academy Charter School. She has taught fourth grade, she has done some coaching. She's working, uh, more as some administrative pieces right now, um. And she has her master's degree from Brown University and her undergraduate degree from Stone Hill College. Uh, the team that interviewed her was very excited about, um, her literacy knowledge, her depths and breadth of literacy knowledge and just the work that she's done with the fourth, fourth grade students around community, community building. Um, her degree from Brown was in urban educational policy. So she had a, a great, a great kind of perspective on the community building and really working with students around, um, those pieces of behavior and, and that. So it's, it's, they're very excited at Nolton School, so that is.
And she's going to be, this is a fifth grade class.
This is a fifth grade class, so we.
She's okay with that.
Yeah. So we would like to be able to, um, have her join us. We need your approval.
Somebody like to make a motion or?
I make a motion that we, uh, proceed with hiring Rebecca Albertson for fifth grade at Nolton School.
Second?
I'll second.
Lynn? All those in favor? Everybody.
Thank you for talking. That all of the employment, that's all on point.
Moving to other.
Feel like I'm doing talking here.
You are.
I know, I know, just wanted to.
We have all of the knowledge because it's.
Um, we did schedule a code of conduct meeting
Yes.
for the, right before the next board meeting.
Thanks.
Which is the sixteenth of December.
Yes, cuz I, I think I sent it out six different licenses, something like that.
At five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty.
Five thirty, December sixteenth.
So, do we have, I have administrators who are interested in being on the code of conduct committee. I would love a couple of board members and I will bring snacks, so.
I don't mind giving it to them.
Okay. Alright. So we have, anybody else that would like to play?
If you're gonna be here.
Yeah, we'll do it right here. Okay, oh, this one.
This is to, are you asking people to participate in that meeting or in a longer term commitment on the committee?
So basically, we'd like to go, have an initial meeting, look at the code of conduct, see if there's anything that we need to be looking at additionally. Um, just sort of do some updating from the schools as to what's going on. And see if there's any area where we need to either expand it. Um, and for instance, restorative justice, I think is being used in a couple of different places and making sure that we actually have the, that information in our code of conduct. Um, things like that Denise. I don't, I don't see this as a very, very long-term commitment because the original code of conduct committee did quite a bit of work. But we definitely need to like relook at it and make sure that, um, we're meeting, we're meeting the needs, uh, of the discipline policies in the district, that kind of thing.
I could probably go to that meeting, but I'm not sure that I could commit to anything longer than that. So if there are other people that wanted to go and commit, then go for it, but, um, if nobody else is, then I, I could at least go to that meeting.
Okay, and I think that honestly, you're wel- any of you are welcome at any point for this. Um, it's nice to have a person who can consistently make for a bit, but it's not, um, again, I'm, I'm anticipating this to be sort of a short-term commitment.
Did you say the fifteenth through sixteenth?
I said, I think I've said seven different things, but it is actually the sixteenth at five thirty P M.
Sixteenth? Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Right, so what I'll do, and I'll send it out to everybody, I'll just send the code of conduct that we've utilized. I'll send it out to everybody on the board, just so you have it. Um, and then if you have questions that you wanna shoot at us that we can explore, that's fine as well. Uh, on it. Okay.
Okay, and then I just have two others. We have had our initial cost center budget meeting starting this week. We haven't finished everybody. Uh, but we just want you to know that they're coming in very responsible, fiscally responsible. Um, but also thinking of longer term about programming, student enrollment, um, needs of new staff that are coming in, those types of things. So the meetings have been going very well. Uh, so that's always a good way to, to start that, that process that takes us so long
Yes.
to, to get through. And then our newsletter is set to go out either tomorrow afternoon or Monday. We sometimes hold on Friday just because we know schools send things home on Friday, so we might get that out on Monday instead.
So if people who don't have children in the schools, what would they do if they wanna make sure they get a copy of the newsletter? Is there a list they can sign up for?
That's, you know what, that is our biggest conundrum, I think, because.
Yeah, cuz I've had some people ask me about that. They wanna be more supportive of the school and so they'd like to have more information about what's going on.
Okay.
So I bet we can set up a, um, an email list, yeah.
To email, I was just gonna say email.
Yeah, so we'll talk to Chris about how to put it out there to have people wanna sign up for it. And I'll, if, on the district page and I'll send it, including two lists that you can send it out to people. That is our biggest. Uh, communication is our hardest piece, you know, and it's not for lack of, um, anybody trying, it's just a, a piece of it. We are in the process of hopefully being able to hire that piece of the P R person when, when, um, Laura resigned. We haven't been able to fill that, but we're, we're getting closer.
Getting closer.
We're this close, I think we're gonna get there, so, um, that will be helpful. Uh, so yeah, I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Those are all others, that's it.
Anybody else?
I have an other question. Um, we all got an email from, um, or, uh, from Tiffany Roberts and I just didn't know if anyone had gotten back to her. She was asking, she's a local rep.
Yes.
And then came in front of the board last year to talk about up, the upcoming legislative session. Um, I had found it really helpful, but I didn't, I didn't know if anybody had responded to her yet.
Do we want her to come to, do we wanna invite her to a meeting?
We can, I mean, if, but tonight we don't have a really heavy agenda, you know.
Right, right, right.
I think she was looking for it to be sometime in December before their session kicks off.
So we, we could prob- we could set something up if she's available next meeting.
Yeah.
It's always nice when you, you know, to have the legislatures here so that we can at least express our, right, hopes, hopes and dreams, right?
Yes.
Express our thoughts.
I mean, she's the one that ever reaches out and, um, I, it's nice to hear what they've got, what they're working on and I think it's important, you know, for her to hear what some of our priorities are.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. And that'll be December seventeenth, sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah.
Same.
Oh yeah, the break is just not on. Any other?
Okay. Do we have any public, yeah? Okay.
Thank you. We do have executive session.
Right.
Yeah.
We have to, do we have to adjourn from this first though?
We will step into executive session and we'll let the world know that we're not gonna do any other public input, uh, public business after the executive session, so knowing that we will not come back.
Okay, so, somebody wanna make that motion? It's all written there. If you wanna say all the numbers to go into executive session. Do we have somebody who will make the motion?
I'll make a non-fancy. I make a, a motion that moves to executive session. Does that work?
That does, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
So, okay.
Alright, we're gonna have to kick you out sir. But thank you for being here. I'm gonna hit the stop recording button.